Come out with us tonight on this cold morning, or evening. Like to call the meeting to order and with you standing in recite the pledge with us. Okay, first thing we need to do is approval of the agenda. Have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second it.
Okay, second. All in favor? Do I have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
I have reviewed the minutes and will make a motion we approve.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, second. Any staff updates?
Really only one update tonight. Only one update tonight for the planning board. We really just wanted to plug the public forum. The town is hosting next Wednesday, December tenth at the Mills River Elementary School Gymnasium. It's going on from six P M. To eight thirty P M. And we're going to be focusing on the Unified Development Ordinance zoning update project. So this is the project the town's taken on with consultants to rewrite all of our land use development regulations, come up with new zoning districts and a new zoning map for the whole town. So this is kind of our pre holiday push before we start getting into the meat and potatoes of our steering committee looking at the new regulations where we're making a big push for public input. We're holding this specifically to basically meet with folks one on one to answer questions. Find what the the new zoning for your property might be. And if there's concerns about that, those will be recorded and taken back into consideration. So again, Wednesday, December tenth, Mills River Elementary School at ninety four Schoolhouse Road. The the it'll start at six P M. With a presentation, kind of an overview from the consultant about the project, how we got here, why we're doing this. And then again, the the latter part of the of the time will be focused on one on one questions, looking at maps and doing exercise together and try to answer everyone's questions and note concerns and comments. And that's the only update I wanted to plug tonight.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Okay, at this time, we're going to open up for a public comment, and I'd like to in case you don't know, if you ground rules, when you speak, please come to the microphone. And we normally limit to try to limit you to three minutes now. And we we have a large crowd. We want to be able to hear what everyone has to say tonight because that's what this is all about. And I I've been on the planning board for several years, and I am just overjoyed that we have this crowd tonight because that's something we always have tried to get people to come and let us know what you want. Although the planning board is an advisory board, but we we put a lot of work into the things we recommend to council. And first of all, I think we have a couple of emails that we'd like to get staff members to read for you.
Yes, we received three emails prior to the meeting, and we'll read these into the record up until the three minutes unless the chair is going to grant the time. And so I'll I'll begin with the first one. This email is from Chris Ware of Forge Mountain Electric. Dear Planning Board members, my name is Chris Ware. I am a resident and business owner in the town of Mills River. I am writing to express my strong opposition to any proposed changes to the existing nuisance ordinance, particularly particularly those that would target businesses for keeping necessary materials and supplies on their property. The ordinance was originally established in twenty nineteen, and its current form effectively balances community well being with the operational needs of local enterprises. Local businesses, including my own, require onsite storage of materials to efficiently provide essential services to the community. Such materials are integral to the day daily operations and enable businesses to respond promptly to consumer needs. Pursuing these businesses as nuisances because of the supplies essential to their function would have significant and detrimental consequences for both the local economy and residents. These include lost revenue and taxes. Restricting onsite material storage would directly result in lost business opportunities and a reduction in tax revenue for the county negatively impacting public services and infrastructure. Increase costs. The inability to maintain work materials conveniently onsite would lead to increased operational costs for businesses, including transportation and offsite storage expenses. These additional costs would ultimately be passed on to consumers through higher prices for goods and services. Additionally, reduced or altered services. Businesses may be forced to significantly alter or reduce the scope of services they provide due to the inability to 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 store and have materials readily on hand. This could lead to inconvenience for residents and a decline in the availability of crucial local services. I urge you to carefully consider the vital role these businesses play in our community, contributing to its economic health and providing essential services. Please reject any changes to the nuisance ordinance that would unfairly penalize businesses for conducting necessary operations in maintaining the resources required for their day to day functions. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of this critical issue. Sincerely, Chris Ware.
Is that the one you have?
Chris is going to take the next one.
This email is from Jimmy Cowan. Good evening, planning board. I'm Jimmy Cowan, and I live on Presbyterian Church Road here in Mills River. I am not from Mills River, but I've lived here since nineteen ninety seven and have some family roots here. I volunteered on the original incorporation committee and served on the interim council until we held our first election after town incorporation in two thousand. My wife and I are raising a family here and love our community. There are some decisions that I think have been made recently and regulations that have been interpreted in a way I am not proud of. I think we can do better as a town and more importantly, as a community. I have lived a few places, and when I moved to Mills River, I felt like there was more of a sense of community here than anywhere I have ever lived. When I moved here, neighbors knew their neighbors and treated them in a neighborly way. If people had issues with a neighbor, they would meet them at the mailbox or knock on their door and discuss the issue in search of a solution that there was a compromise both could live with. Those days have changed, and I am concerned that our town is starting to cater to the small minority of persistent complainers and not the masses that enjoy where we live and want to be good neighbors. Regulations and overregulation can be a problem. Regulations, no matter how they're written, have unintended consequences and while put in place to help the community, can also actually hurt people, businesses and families. Staff has has to be in a place that can carry out the wishes of council and the intent of the ordinances while remembering that we want a community that gets along and encourages neighbors to get along and everyone find or maintain happiness. We, as individuals in the community, should not expect regulations to be in place that restrict all of our neighbors to only what we personally find pleasing and perfect in our own eyes. The town incorporated to maintain our rural character, keep large developments out and protect agriculture. Are we fulfilling our mission? Some points I would like to make from my perspective relative to concerning the changing to who the nuisance or ordinance are. One, controlling or regulating vegetative growth is not a fit for Mills River. Town Hall can't even manage vegetative growth. Let's be smart and not pay staff to measure grass and while on taxpayers payroll. The definition of substantial should be different between residential and commercial businesses. Even if the ordinance doesn't spell it out, which I think it used to and was intended to do back when it was first implemented according to the prior mayor. An enforcement officer with little common sense should be able to differentiate between a pile of tires at an auto repair shop and a pile of tires at a residential dwelling. As in the nuisance ordinance of Henderson County, items at a business that are related to the business being conducted should not be considered a nuisance. Again, common sense. This was the intent of Mills River, but we have lost sight of this. Three, we have too many regulations on the books now. A staff's answer is instead of clarity and carrying out the intent of current regulation wants more pages of more regulations and more authority to give staff. This is wrong. We have so many regulations that council or committees can't keep up with what we have on the books, and staff has a hard time with it as well. And I was counting up instead of down, and we've hit three minutes. Apologies.
Okay. You have a you want to extend the time?
It's at the chair's pleasure.
This, I think he's pretty well covered it. This will become a part of the minutes, so.
It will be part of the minutes, all three of the emails.
Go on to the next one then.
The final one we received was from Amber Fulmar. Dear Mills River Planning Board, I'm sorry I won't be able to attend tonight's planning meeting as I'm homesick caring for a sick child. I wanted to share my thoughts and support for the proposed zoning and other initiatives. Support for the U D O. I'm excited about the proposed zoning plan shared at the last meeting at the firehouse. I love the idea of clustered areas for industry and commercial uses. The concept of a designated town center potentially creating a downtown is very appealing. I appreciate that commercial development stops before Schoolhouse Road, preserving the character of surrounding areas. Concerns and suggestions. First, traffic and nuisance ordinances. As a teacher at Glenn Marlowe Elementary, I've noticed many eighteen wheeler trucks use Butler Bridge Road as a cut through. It would be helpful to limit large trucks to four lane roads unless they have a specific destination. Light pollution. I support policies to reduce light pollution in the town. For example, the tile business on Highway two eighty leaves lights on at all hours, including non business times, which is concerning. Getting involved. I would love to find ways to get more involved in local planning and policy. Could you advise on opportunities such as joining a board or participating in committees? Thank you for all the work you do for our town. I appreciate your consideration of my feedback and look forward to contributing where I can. Warm regards, Amber Fulmar, one twelve round top circle.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Okay, now we'll have a list of people who signed up to speak.
Chair, I can add to your rule of speaking at the mic and the three minute limitation for personal. We also ask names and address.
Yes, I was going to mention that. All right, I think the first one on the list is it Dew or Drew? Well, I wasn't probably not even close. And state your name and address, please, for us. Thanks.
My name is Dennis McCraw. The address is ten one seventy two Boston Highway. I'm I started my business in Mills River in nineteen eighty six and expanded multiple times. Due to need for additional space, I purchased the parcel at ten one seventy two Boston Highway in two thousand four from another corporation. In two thousand nine, I erected a commercial building on this property, which the town approved and the county approved everything that I did. I was very strict about making sure I adhere to the, you know, the codes. The after the which the county then changed the property to commercial designation. In November of last week or so ago, November twenty fourth, I attended town's community conversation meeting and saw per the proposed zoning map. My property would no longer be designated commercial. After the meeting, Mr. Cole and Mr. Ross approached me and requested I come to this meeting to present my situation and rectified. So I'm here to request that this be corrected on the town zoning proposal prior to June twenty six. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Todd Wagner.
Todd Wagner, eighty seven thirty eight Boylston Highway. Thirty years ago, my father in law started a family owned trucking and truck repair facility under the rules and regulations that were in place at the time. If he would have known how it would be thirty years later, he would have never put his roots down here in Mills River. How can there not be any business grandfathered in that was here long before Mills River became a township and all this B S nuisance ordinance was put into place? These inspectors are here for nothing more than to build their resumes. It's amazing to me that everyone on the board and everyone on town council has to live here. But the ones making suggestions for ordinances and changes to Mills River don't even live here. The whole reason the nuisance ordinances was brought to the planning board was because there was no separation between business and residential properties. Common sense, which is not seem to be abundant around here, says that the would work when the first ordinances were put into place. It was plain and simple. But a certain person decided to get it removed. Now they have spent more time on how tall grass should be before they hand out a fine. Their answer for businesses is to build a fence around the business at the expense of the the businesses, to put a smile on neighbor's face that have nothing better to do than calling complaints. Tell the neighbor to build a fence on their property. Not once at any one of these meetings have I heard Mr. Melocheck or Mr. Webb say one word about trying to keep Mills River rural or saving agriculture. I've been told that there is zero exemptions or grandfather clauses except for agricultural for nuisance ordinances. But although we do not have specific light pollution ordinances, we have strict building codes on new builds. So how does the new fire department and tile store light up a square mile? Maybe instead of new ordinances, we need some new inspectors. And when the air pollution was brought up, board members say they want exemptions because they heat their house with wood stoves. I also believe a couple on the board would fall into a bona fide farm. And inspectors are looking for clarity because they say it's being abused. These ordinances have costed our business upwards of fifteen thousand dollars. The largest being a truck that had a lot of good parts on it. Mr. Webb said he was a said it was a public health hazard. I was unaware that he was a health inspector. This needs to stop, and you, the planning board, is the first step in making this happen. My opinion of a health hazard would be public parks, walking paths, overgrown, abundant built abandoned buildings and a square of three hundred square foot area that fifty to seventy five dogs urinate in every day. To Mr. Melocheck's comment at the last meeting about trying to get through the red tape, red tape to clean this park up is to the sum of over five hundred thousand dollars. Sure wish I had some of that red tape from my property. The whole town should be ashamed of this, being the money is coming from FEMA. And some people lost everything except the clothes on their backs. Lives are lost, and they couldn't even get fifty bucks. With this being said, planning board, take everyone into consideration, not just yourselves or these inspectors. There are plenty of gated communities in Mills River, if that's how you want to live with H O A rules. We sure do not want this to be Chicago, Durham, or even Asheville. The things going on here is not keeping it rural or protecting our agriculture. This was the package from last month's meeting. This is ridiculous to keep it rural. Government is not always the solution, but usually the problem, especially when outsiders come in from big cities and try to take over our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Next to Dee Dee Dillingham.
Dee Dee Dillingham, nineteen Tiger Lily Lane, Acony Bell Tiny House Community. I wanted to talk about flood plains and light pollution. So before Hurricane Helene, January, we had flooding at Acony Bell. I watched. I live at the creek. So I watched the creek go over into our gully, which is right by my house. And then I was standing on my couch, watching the the water rise about two feet from the gully until it was going to come into my house. So I already knew that, you know, we were going to have a problem that January. I had no idea that we were going to have a hurricane in September. So again, I was watching the water rise and the the creek crested into the gully, the gully crested, and it did come up to my my skirting. Luckily for that, luckily for me and a bunch of other of my neighbors, that's that that's the effect that we had compared to everybody else. Lot of other people lost their homes. So flood plains to me are very important. And I would like the flood plains to be preserved and not built on in the U D O. And the hundred year flood plains, the floodways. I really think that we absolutely have to be on the same page that we cannot build on flood plains. Secondly, light pollution. We are just, everybody brings up the tile place. Who doesn't? I was there at four thirty in the morning, and there's I counted fifty one lights. Can you imagine being the people across two eighty? They have to deal with that light pollution. So while we may not be able to control our neighbors' lights, can we control commercial and industrial properties lights? Because it's not just human health that's affected. It's wildlife health. Very, very detrimental. So those are the two things that I wanted to bring up today.
Thank you. Ken Allison.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Ken Allison. I'm at Etowah, North Carolina, just across the valley. I'm the owner of Hillside Nursery Wholesale Company, and our offices are in Etowah. We're wholesale tree nursery, and we farm a little over a thousand acres here in the area. We're currently looking to buy a property in the Mills River area to expand. And we just have some concerns about regulation and anything that might impact agriculture being able to perform here as we would love to. We love the community. It's a great area and we're just probably going to put our conversation with our seller on hold until we get a little further along with this process, just to make sure that we're comfortable and see where this is going. I'm also a member of the Henderson County Agriculture Advisory Board. Been on that board for a little over forty five years. I'm I'm getting older. But I do see and realize the challenges that you guys have, and I admire you. I appreciate all your time and efforts. It can be a thanks job sometimes, and I'm sure you get a lot of phone calls and a lot of questions. But with a community this dynamic and this much going on, it's a real challenge to move things forward in responsible, conservative manner. And I'm sure that's the 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 intent here. But the only thing that we would ask is, you know, it looks like there's three groups here that really need and deserve to be represented. And of course, that's your community citizens who've decided that this is their home. This is a place they want to live. And those folks need a clear, loud voice, you know, in in our in our town government. And then the business community somehow or another, creating a balance is y'all's challenge. And then the last is the agricultural community. I'm sure that there's a way through and a way to make all this work. But we we do want to let you know that we're 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 concerned and we're watching and we're hoping for a a real resolution to it. There's an awful lot going on here, and it's such a wonderful community. The green spaces here is virtually national forest and agriculture, and that's a real attraction. And folks have discovered Mills River, and they're definitely coming, and they're here. So I I I admire you guys for what you're doing and appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
The concerns, you said you had concerns. I just wanted to ask you if you would, if you wanted to be more specific, is it what the things you see with the U D O that we're working on or the nuisance ordinance?
Well, in in being here all these years, you know, we went through the U D O process in Henderson County. And you're never going to please everyone on every issue. We we're all well aware of that. But being consistent, and there's lots of templates that are out there for U D O development. And it's the best thing you can do is, as you've already mentioned, is get that public input and try to encourage folks to come out. They're the residents. They have the biggest stake in this game. And they need to have a voice in some way to encourage them to be vocal and let you know what they say, what they what what their concerns are. Was the biggest challenge in Henderson County when they were doing the U D O over there. We're also working on a farmland preservation plan now, and the commissioners have embraced that, and we're working through that now. It's a it it's it's complicated. It's it's difficult, but there's a path through and
From an agricultural standpoint, specifically your business growing trees, that's where they what concerns you about doing that in November?
Well, you you take the water, for instance, water is a big issue. If there were an overreach by this Mills River township to somehow or another want to embrace the water regulatory. We already have the Asheville city. We already have the Henderson City water. We have the E P A already here. We have folks who have degrees in the botany, in the entomology, marine biologist, the water's being checked. So it seems to me like, you know, that's an overreach, and it's already being handled. So it's things like that, you know, that that we're looking at. If there's some duplications and some, but if there's some additional ordinances or some additional regulations, we as a company look to make an investment here. And we're private, for profit company. We love this area, and we have a lot of friends here, and we the soil structure's fantastic. It has a lot going for it. And we can maintain a lot of green space if we're successful in in coming here, you know. And that's what we bring to the table. But we're also concerned with additional regulations, and, you know, it's a concern. And I appreciate your time.
I just clarity was helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. A Will Smith. Uh, A. Will Schmidt.
It's Will Schmidt and I'm in Goldmine Road right here in Mills River. I don't really have much to say, but I would like to uh reinforce what Mr. Wagner said. And that there should be some sort of um allowances for people that have been here with businesses. For such a long time. We don't want to make it difficult for them. We don't want to kick them out. We don't want to destroy that economy that we do have, drive them to another community where they have less regulation. And 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 the other thing about it is I'm a farmer. And I I came here because Mills River has a farming community rooted in it. That that's what really attracted me to it. It's what attracts a lot of people. Beautiful countryside, beautiful land, clean air. We don't want to make it look like Nourshell. Or some metropolitan thing because somebody from up north came down here and said, oh, I don't like the way your. Your property looks now. Well, it's been that way for thirty years. And I've been doing business for thirty years. What's the difference? You know, we got to protect those people that have invested their whole lives. In our community here. And as far as your um laws in terms of. Property maintenance and whatever, I've been on both sides is the thing. I've been a. A person that they've complained against. I went through hell, you know, been threatened for fines and everything. And I said, look, folks, I'm a farmer. I'm entitled to have farming agricultural equipment on my property. And if the lady next door finds that offensive, I'm sorry, but that's the way it is. And now I put a complaint in because my neighbor down from he's got a junkyard that he's building. He has dozens of unregistered vehicles. I put a complaint in two years ago and it hasn't changed a bit. It's worse now than it ever was. My complaint never got addressed. I got a letter back that said, oh, he's he's working on it. We we're overlooking the problem. Nothing's been done. So you don't have the the staff or the or the. People to regulate and address what you have on the books now, and you're going to make it more complicated. That doesn't make sense to me. And I just think you better think about the people who have invested their lives here to make it a foreign community, number one, first and foremost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Well, I tend to agree, and this is my personal opinion, that uh, and I think we're going to be looking into. In more in-depth into this, that uh, existing businesses will be grandfathered in as far as I know. All right, uh. Did I get everybody that was signed up? I have one of them. Oh, come on up. I must have missed you there.
I think most of you know me. I'm Mike Corn. I run a farm here in Mills River. Uh, the first thing I'd like to address is the flood ordinance. And if that goes in, then the farmers will have to get permits and governmental regulation to repair their field. I'm very proud of what the farmers did to work together to repair their fields and we're better off for it. They didn't ask for any money or any outside help. I think when you get around to it, if you look at a farmer and you scrape the mud and a murrow. They've got some of the greenest ideas of anybody in the world. I think that's, you need to recognize that. Next thing I would like to address is the air quality thing. And I like to think of it like this. Some cheeses make me gag, but other people think they're a award-winning cheese. So air quality is a very subjective thing. It's kind of what you got in your mind, what's up and it pleases you. The next thing I want to address is the water quality. I'm subject to a lot of rules and regulations. Because of the depart- Department of Environmental Quality, the water pollution part. I have a notebook full of stuff. I have to keep unlimited notes just about. Uh, I had my inspection last week. I mean, it comes yearly, that kind of thing. But you talk about getting out there and checking it quicker. This is not happening. It's a new regime that is more. Common sense now in the water quality people here, but they, seven or eight years ago. When they had a thunderstorm in Mills River, they could be out and take a water sample of that water running off within an hour. And what, when the farmer approached them, their comment was, this is the best time to get it. What are they trying to prove with that? So anyway. And the third thing I'm going to address is the vegetative growth. Uh, this is an extreme example. But I grow hay next to Marlowe School. What happens is some lady comes in. Picking up her kid and she has a sneezing attack or sinus attack or something. And my field is ready to harvest, but it's all the pollen is bothering her. Is this the next step? Uh, thank you.
I think that covers everyone, except we have one other one that uh, I want to explain.
Uh, that's me. I'll I'll say what I need to say here and uh.
This is, that's, you, yeah, Mr. Ross.
Sorry, if you want to make sure we're done there.
Brian, Mr. uh Ross, if you'd like to make a public comment, go right ahead at the podium, just to keep it separate from board comments.
Now, I'll keep those separate for another meeting.
Okay.
I'm I'm glad we have uh participation tonight. I don't want to take any more of their time than we have.
I believe we have one other gentleman back there coming up, please.
Good evening. I'm Daniel Johnson. I'm twenty-one sixty-five Jeffers Road. Uh, I would just like to clarify something that Mr. Wagner pointed out. So the sheet that was handed to you was the original uh nuisance ordinance. On businesses being exempt. So when I was presented with my nuisance ordinance or the the violation, this is what. I found because we had Henderson counties adopted nuisance ordinance. This is straight off Henderson County. But when we, as Mills River. Created our own website, this disappeared. Don't know how, but it disappeared. So that that's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to clarify that. Uh, just for those that are listening and can't see.
I said.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Brian, did you want to comment as a citizen or?
Oh, wait, it'll all be bored tonight. How about that?
Okay.
You're ready. Start whatever you want with that.
Well.
Welcome to start with me, but you know I'm going to talk too long.
Well, I'm, board's open for comments, I guess.
Fine, I'll jump in. So uh, I say repeatedly, for anyone that's ever watched the. Um, whether you agree with me personally or me professionally or not, I beg people to show up. So first, I just want to say how happy I am. See all, everyone here, agree or not, uh, I will quote orally till the day I'm kicked out of this town. We all love this town. We all just define it a little differently. Uh, so I'm, it's just ecstatic to see the involvement. Uh, and I mean, um, wish I could have just. Correct, I won't take too much time to correct a lot of edits we're hearing out there. Um, have two big buckets tonight, the UDO bucket and the nuisance bucket. Uh, I want to go to the nuisance first because um. I want everyone to understand where we're at with it. We. We, six out of the seven people on this board, we're not all here tonight, six out of the seven of us weren't here. When Daniel, that would change from Henderson County to Mills River has their own. It wasn't us. None of the town councils, the town council got hit with the complaint. And they instructed staff to revisit the whole thing. So that's why we're revisiting it. I hope not to make it more complicated. I hope to to provide instead clarity so that there's less gray area there. It hurts me when I hear people. I'll be really honest, it hurts me when I hear people say the town employees are working against you. The town employee employees work at the direction of staff, one, two. They don't have clarity. You, no one sitting here or here can explain the current nuisance ordinance or. All of our ordinances to me. That's why we're investing a two hundred thousand dollars as a town. Into correcting it so there's clarity. If nothing else, at the end of this, there's going to be clarity. Whether you agree with it or not, it's a different conversation, but I'll defend our employees from that standpoint, that I believe their intentions are good. Um, their directive with this nuisance ordinance is to bring it to us. If I'm not mistaken, we all agree to scratch the grass conversation completely. So we can stop, is that correct, Mr. Malch? We we didn't like it at all. There's no conversation. I know last week at the fire department, the mayor said they're over there talking about grass six or twelve inches. I think he was just trying to. Give you guys an example, get involved. We dropped that. We didn't like that at all. We can't sit here and make all these decisions on our own though, so I'm so happy to hear you guys. I can't make notes fast enough. Uh, thank you so much. Email these guys. They will respond. They will encourage um. Engagement from all of you, from all of us. We're all volunteers, but we're all residents. Everybody on this board, that's not the same for all committees in this town, but in this one, we're all residents. We we care. On the UDO, the same thing. I I just can't encourage the uh. Engagement, involvement enough. December tenth, next week at Mills River Schools Gymnasium, six o'clock. The next night is a town council meeting, last of the year. Uh, always come and speak there. A couple of things that were said tonight, and I'm not going to bullet point them, a couple of things that were said tonight. Are probably better addressed at town council and not this board. A couple of things. I'm not going to discourage you from coming here and talking to us. I would in fact encourage you to come to both of us. Uh, I will say in the businesses, um, see if I have my names, Mr. McCraw, Mr. McCraw or Mr. McGraw. Crap. Um, just to clarify, and we did talk with you, Mike and I, for a few minutes at the fire department last week. In the UDO, not the nuisance order, the UDO, we're going to try to grandfather in. Use whatever word you want. We're trying to grandfather in everything we can. We, you know, we want any kind of record, you know, um. Miss Ware, hate to put you on the spot, but you brought it up and I said, well, you're a legitimate business with a license. You're not going to have a problem. It's going to be easy to track yours. I want to encourage anybody who's running businesses, um, you know, anywhere in the town, just to keep track of, you know, hate to use this word proof, but. But be able to prove it because we're not trying to change it. If you're running a business today. And it becomes a residential area, you still get to run your business. We just, that's why we're encouraging you. And again, Mr. Malch, correct me if I'm wrong here, but we're encouraging you to come to our meetings and point out, this is me, it's a business. We don't want, no one's going to be non-conforming after that. Our goal, and we're only part of that board, the Board of Adjustments is the other half of that, that's involved. And what's called the Steering Committee. Um, to uh, to work with the firm that was hired, somebody, and I'm sorry, names and faces, somebody pointed out, somebody who doesn't live in this town is directing traffic. They're not, they're just doing all the legalese for us. They're taking input from everybody here, here and out there. ImagineMillsRiver.com is dot com, right? ImagineMillsRiver.com. You can sign up for information on that UDO. You can provide input and suggestions. There's other websites, there's other Facebook pages, uh, lots of things out there. Really encourage everybody to share this information. We're begging for it. I'll be talking, stop me.
Uh, I've got some to say, but I don't.
Thank you.
I don't want to jump in front of Billy either.
You know me, man.
Um, a couple of things, yes, Mr. Paul, thank you for coming. We uh, not only did we speak with you, we gave the wrong date. I I thought, and I didn't remember, didn't remember the name at the time, and all I think of was. We we meet a week earlier than we told them and then they show up and it's dark and like they didn't really want.
He showed up here.
Yeah.
You made it.
So thank you for that. You know, existing businesses are really important, all the work that we're doing, both from a nuisance ordinance. Um, you know, and the UDO project and and so forth. What I would like to say though is that. What we're doing and what we do as a planning board is completely public to the second gentleman. I forgot your name, forgive me, I can't remember the name. Um, but it's, so when staff, whether it's Kevin or Michael or anybody else. Runs through some of the, what what they've done is they've just gathered lots of ordinances from everywhere else, right? The type of grass and how far mice travel. I mean, just weird stuff. I mean, really, so. While they're talking about it, it's not their recommendation. They were just sharing with us from different municipalities around the state of. Of North Carolina. So what we do is very public and there's, there's information provided and so forth, but not recommendation from staff. It's really information that we ask for, provided by staff. So I want to make sure you, that makes sense. That's on the UDO as well, so. Very public, there'll be lots of things we'll talk through, talk about. You know, it doesn't mean that that's how anybody feels, but we need examples and input, stuff like that. So that input is really important. I just want to clarify that. That the height of grass and all that stuff that you hear, or this is what we want to do and so forth, it's just looking at different municipalities to get some. Sense of it because it landed on our lap, you know, take a look at the at the uh, at the nuisance ordinance. I mean, a business has to have certain things to do business. I don't know anybody on this board who wants to get in the way of that, so. Um, if we didn't originate here, didn't originate with staff that originated with town council, we're doing what they ask us to do. So again, that's some of the stuff is. I agree with you, but it's not what, it's not like, hey, this sounds like a great idea. If somebody from out of town asks us to do that, no, just look at an example, so. Um. And then the lighting, lighting ordinance, yeah, I mean, we we did create and adopt a lighting ordinance a year, year and a half ago. And so, um, and then, and and businesses were grandfathered in, um, unfortunately. From that standpoint, yeah, um, I saw two eighty on that. That's, that's not two hundred and eighty lights. It's on two eighty, okay. Feels like two hundred and eighty lights, yeah. So um, it's it's certainly something that we can address, certainly busy, but I love that feedback, busy. Video and that sort of thing, but just know what we do is very public, lots of stuff that goes on it. Uh, and you'll hear a lot of different things, but none of them, they're really more for information for us to consider, look at and. And not look at and not consider and that sort of things. Just want to be clear on that. Um, and I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And Mike touched on something that's very dear to my heart, I guess you'd say. Because I remember when Brian came on the planning board, I was already here. And we sort of have an unwritten agreement. That we're going to discuss in depth, everything, just like Mike was talking about. And sometimes we we do discuss it. Uh, and we're going to discuss it even if I have to take the opposite opinion. It may not be, but we're going to have that discussion. And that's the way I'm coming from, Mike. Anybody else?
I'll speak up.
Okay, take it.
Hey, everybody. Thank y'all for coming. Um, it is greatly appreciated as both gentlemen have uh mentioned before. Um, especially when I hear some of my own words coming right back at me. Thank you. For watching at the very least, and thank you for being here tonight. That does mean a lot. Um, I don't, I'm a native. Um, I would like to make sure that Mills River doesn't turn into an HOA. No, I'm not saying y'all that live in HOAs don't love it, yay for you. Um, just not for me. So um, we do need your input. Talk to us when you see us out in public. Talk, come see us here. Come see us at town council when we're there. Um, I don't always have. I mean, I only live from my perspective. So when y'all come to tell us your perspective, that gives us a broader range to pull from. And some ideas are just not going to work for our local businesses, like some businesses. Um, and some ideas are just not going to work for the residents at all. Uh, so please, um, keep on coming, keep on talking to us. Um, especially when you disagree with something, tell me. Um, I I don't know otherwise. I can't read your mind and neither can uh the rest of the board, so we would definitely appreciate. Your opinion.
Anyone have, anyone else?
Yeah, I just like to, thank everybody for coming and it's real, real important for everyone to provide your input. Um, the process that that we have to follow to do this is is somewhat arduous and clunky and. In while we're doing it, it appears that we're, might be condoning this or condoning that, or pushing this or pushing that. Um, basically, we're just taking input from staff. Getting it all, putting it out and discussing it amongst ourselves, and it's your input that's going to give us the direction. That that we we really need to go in. So uh, just cr- critical important, you you guys stay plugged in. And don't be too scared about, you know, if you see something about, you know, how far mice travel, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Something like that. We're certainly not going to regulate mice or anything like that, I don't think. Um, but just, yeah, it's just, just stay plugged in and be aware that uh, that while some things may be discussed. Uh, maybe somewhat contentious or or eye-opening or eyebrow raising, um, it's just part of the process. And and that's, we're here to vet everything, so thank you.
Jim, I do have one more thing, if you don't mind. And I'm sorry, just add a bullet point here. I wanted to clarify, I actually wanted to uh.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We're counting. Go ahead.
Yeah, I I heard a lot of misunderstandings about the vote town council took a few weeks ago on. Yeah, I, I heard a lot of misunderstandings about the vote town council took a few weeks ago on the seventy acres adjacent. The Poland farm that's being developed inside the town of Mills River. I can't tell you how many people approached me saying, man, we stopped that subdivision. That did not happen. That development is allowed by right and it will happen. Previous didn't, there, nothing, at point six acre minimum lot, two hundred and eighty-eight acres, I believe, in plus seventy acres developed at the county's discretion. Um, that is, the vote of stopping the development of that green space is not what town council voted. No, they voted no on not annexed that seventy acres. He's a planning board. We need, I'm sorry. I think we should be on the lookout for those things when we're out there in public. And I've heard this one several times. Um, that, that it's not happening. It is happening. And there's nothing that town, yeah, count, town, so, town council could do about it at all. In fact, there's some people that think maybe we should have annexed it so we could control their zoning and collect their taxes, but that's a different. To close, uh, I just want to, cannot emphasize enough how much I appreciate y'all being here. Was it Mr. Allison? Can I ask you? Hillside, Mr. Was that Allison?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm so, I'm sure the only name I didn't get right, I don't hear real well, is it Cameron or Ken or something else? Thank you. I'm going to quote you. It's difficult. You can't please everyone, but there is a balance. Appreciate it. This is tough. Thanks, Jim.
Okay, and I just to elaborate a little bit on what Brian just said, uh, uh, everything he just covered, there's a webpage out there that I want to make public, if you don't already know about it. It's called Keep Mills River Rural dot org. I highly advise you to go sign up and, and there's a lot, lot, all this information is there. He explains it better than we could in a few words tonight. And uh, but check that one out. Keep Mills River Rural dot org now.
I, I just want to thank everybody for coming out, uh, coming out tonight and appreciate all of you comments and just glad to see everybody out and come any times.
I think you've seen with all of my friends here on the board, we all have the same thing. We want to make sure we hear from you because we are an advisory board and what we've discussed here. And even when we come to a vote on something, that's, you can see where we really stand on that particular subject. Because we may discuss and will discuss a lot of different alternates or things on any subject. So, but the final thing is when we vote on it, that's how we really, what we recommend to council. But then they have the final vote. We are an advisory board. So uh, I guess that concludes uh.
And I have a problem with things.
Okay, go ahead.
Do create whatever it is, whether it's nuisance ordinance or the U D O or anything in the future. You're right, the final vote is obviously how the board feels about or the recommendation we're making. My question to you, Michael, is whatever that is, whether it's the U D O or the new nuisance ordinance or whatever, that is fully uh, from A to Z complete and ready for somebody to review, the public to review before we even vote on, correct?
You're saying it's ready for review at the council level?
Well, before we vote on it, when we have a meeting, we're voting on whatever ordinance we create. The entire ordinance is available for the public to see before we vote on it. So that's, that's important to know as well.
Yes.
Yeah, we would normally have a copy here before we vote. I mean, like I say, we may have, sometimes we, these things take several meetings and we discuss a lot of different things. But on the night you're going to vote, and that's why we love to see this crowd every time. Is the night we're going to vote, then we're voting on our final recommendation at that time. And then when it goes to council, they may even make some modifications and sometimes they even send it back to us. And so uh, it's important if you want to really be involved, attend the meetings, be informed. Okay, uh, I guess that include, concludes uh, public comments. And so now it brings us down to old business and it's a continued nuisance ordinance discussion. So, Michael, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I'm going to kick it off tonight and then I'll hand it over uh, to Mr. Webb, who does the presentation. Just since we have everyone here, I'm going to briefly read through the staff report, just to give some history on how we got where we are today. Um, so town council informally, informally discussed the nuisance ordinance at a, a September meeting. And as their October meeting, that's when they unanimously requested the planning board to review the current nuisance ordinance and update it in its entirety. And so uh, at the October seventh meeting, the planning board reviewed the current nuisance ordinance and discussed specific items and changes for staff research. And then it was at the last meeting, when the planning board reviewed nuisance important, uh, nuisance definitions and the specific prohibitions. And that's where um, uh, the, the normal process has, has been described as staff looks at other jurisdictions and uh, throwing some other topics up for debate, likes the tall grass. Um, the air quality one of honestly was brought up in response to the mulch fire because we had a mulch fire burning in the town for over fifty days. And we were getting complaints at town hall, sometimes multiple times a day about it. And there was absolutely nothing staff could do about it. Um, so that was why that was brought up just for uh, the planning board's consideration. Um, so that was what happened at the November fourth meeting and uh, the planning board gave direction uh, to staff on those certain items. And uh, tonight, we're going to be reviewing uh, basically the administration and enforcement topics of the nuisance ordinance. Our plan is this will be the last uh, kind of full-fledged presentation and discussion. And then staff will need probably a couple of months to draft the ordinance based on all the feedback we've gotten. And then that's something the planning board can consider um, early next year, as Mr. Cole alluded to, where we'll have a draft version for consideration. Um, a little background, it's been talked about already, but Mills River didn't adopt a nuisance ordinance until twenty nineteen. Um, so uh, to the best of my understanding, after the town incorporated, um, unless there was a, an agreement with the county, um, there was no nuisance ordinance in place specifically for the town of Mills River. Uh, but it was put in place in April of twenty nineteen and there was a six-month grace period. And the town actually sent postcards to all property owners in the town of Mills River about a month before it got into effect in October of twenty nineteen. Before we go into the presentation, I just wanted to do a brief review of the current uh, prohibitions in our current ordinance. Because we've talked a lot about um, potential prohibitions and um, what the planning board wants to see. But we haven't gone line by line through the current nuisance ordinance prohibitions. And I just wanted to get some quick feedback from the planning board members on that. Um, I believe the nuisance ordinance was included in your packet as a patchment uh, B specifically, the prohibition. So that's right after the presentation. So really, I'm just going to go down the list of what's not code currently and would just like feedback from the planning board. You know, yay or nay, is this something that's right for Mills River? Again, you know, staff's not making uh, recommendations that these are the right things uh, for the town. Uh, again, just want to go through this list and really uh, put it to the planning board and inform us what they would like to include within the draft.
Michael, can't you let us catch up on what you're picking here on?
Yeah.
So we're an attachment D, but it doesn't appear to be a list.
Sorry, it's. Yeah, attachment B is a boy. Right after.
At the back of discussion and questions.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Sorry.
You said attachment B?
Yes, B.
Okay.
It says prohibitions at the top.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so the first one, and again, these are the nuisance prohibitions that staff um, is charged with enforcing. The first one is improper sewage disposal to such degree that sewage or effluent is discharging onto the surface of the ground, backing up into a structure or discharging into a body of water. Is this something the planning board feels should be kept within the draft nuisance ordinance staff prepares?
You're going to hate me on this, but I don't, I don't want a lot of redundancy. Is this not already uh, enforced at the Henderson County Environmental Health level?
Uh, I may turn over to Mr. Webb to that because he has more experience with county environmental health. But I believe it's only in relation to septic, like uh, private wastewater systems on site.
Okay.
So uh.
This would be commercial then, Kevin?
Or runoff?
So traditionally, uh, with these types of, uh, we get a complaint about usually a septic system that is leaking uh, sewage above ground. So we get a complaint about that. Uh, traditionally we'll relay it over to Henderson County Department of Environmental Health uh, to, in, to, to do enforcement.
Sure. So in residential, and I can tell you from personal experience, my septic field in Mill, the town of Mills River failed. And it was all environmental health.
Sometimes the town being involved, uh, I will say it speeds up the process with the county. Um, the one, the one gap I wanted to highlight is that if it's not septic related, like if it's an R B with a black water tank. Um, they will not look at that.
Okay, great. That's what I'm looking for. I'm not sure, again, that's one of our speakers, our public speakers mentioned that there's already, it already exists over here. I don't want to just be adding layers of that, but I understand what you're saying and yes, in that context. Uh, but obviously I'd like some language that staff will take the call and defer to environmental. I'm agreeing with a.
Or refer to M S D.
Oh, for, for public.
For public, yeah. Somebody's hooked us illegally or, or there's a, some connection is, is fail.
We had that instance where it's, it's been a, a private wastewater line to M S D sewer main. And we did contact them and they came out. So we'll, we'll always defer to the other regulating authority first.
Those utility service there own.
Any other feedback on that one or should I move on?
Good.
Move on.
Uh, the next prohibition is an unsecured opening caused by improperly abandoned cistern, well-pit sewage treatment system, unused or non-maintained swimming pool, mine shaft or tunnel. I don't believe we've ever addressed a complaint regarding this.
So. So. I know it's probably it's the nature of my line of business, but I, we have seen this in the county. We have open silage pits that have been abandoned. You know anything about how those work? I know a couple of people here do know how those work. If they're not secured at the top, they, they can be deep, people are drowning. So I believe silage pits, reverse silo, wherever you call them, wherever you're from. But again, I would ask the question, is that already enforced? You have some abandoned silage pits around here.
And what's unsecured?
So this would be.
Wood?
Yeah, I mean, that, and that's where it comes to staff's discretion in the field. But you know, again, that, this is focusing on the public health safety concern. It gets specifically thinking of like a, a child or someone playing in a field and again, falling into a pit.
I gotcha.
Uh, there would be no other authority that would address that, Mr. Ross.
Thank you for that. I know a lot of people use the word common sense. Uh, I don't want this list to be long, but I do want it to be relative to Mills River.
Anything else on that one? Uh, the third one is failure to keep waste refuse or garbage in an enclosed building or properly contained in a closed insect and rodent-proof container designed or reasonably adapted for such purpose.
Remove.
Residentially?
Remove.
Or commercially?
Remove.
Commercially, there are, there's the.
I mean, both.
There's regulations already in place over grease trap and.
Correct.
Residentially, I'm, I'm out of this. You guys do what you want with your garbage.
Yeah, and on top of that, a lot of people like have private um, pickup or whatnot. They, they bag it the way they see it the night before. And if they want to clean up after bears, then so be it.
So, so again, the health department's going to come in and deal with your restaurants, is that, Nick?
But this is, this is about uh, again, think of uncontained trash or household waste in a yard.
Household.
Well, that, that's the example I'm giving now, but I will say, based on our experiences, receiving complaints and responding to them regarding this, it's primarily going to be residential. But you're correct, the commercial entities are the ones where there's going to be another authority that can get involved.
Right. If the commercial is covered by another authority, I'm not looking to dig into someone's garbage in their yard. I mean, HOAs have their own rules outside of that. Step on my property and tell me what to do with my garbage. Won't go well.
Alright, so no.
But the five other votes here.
Yeah, let's hear from some others.
But I, I do have a problem with any of them, Bill. Um, but then when I, you know, and I put my decycler in the trash out, sometimes more than bits in your tank or nothing, but working there, that, so. Um.
Mr. Kimsey, what about you? How about, how you feel about those?
Uh, I think remove it here.
Anyone else?
What do you think, Brett?
It, it's, it's, it's a clunky, the way it's written anyway, um.
It also.
I could go either way with it.
It also kind of spills into item E as well.
Right.
So we can always address it.
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
If there's nothing else on that, I'll move to the next one. Uh, D, accumulation of carcasses of animals, birds or fish by failing to bury, store or otherwise dispose of in a sanitary can or within twenty-four hours after death.
I'm aging a deer at my house right now.
Yeah.
Could be there for the next four days.
We've never enforced this.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, carcasses, animal, basically uh, an accumulation of animal carcasses that are not being disposed after twenty-four hours after death.
At all.
Yeah, all, all agricultural and bona fide farm uses are exempt from this whole ordinance. We not, we not, we never enforce this ordinance on uh, farmers. I will say we have gotten complaints about spray drifting and we tell those people that this is an agricultural community. And there's uh, nothing we're going to be able to do about that.
I think we should remove it because for two reasons. Um, one, we've got hunters. And then two, we also have folks that may not be a bona fide farm, but they may have horses, they may have a couple ahead of cow. And it may take them longer than twenty-four hours to get that in the ground. Um, I think it's a little bit intrusive.
B worth talking about, right?
Yeah, yeah, remove.
Alright, I see consensus on that. Uh, so let's dig into T. So this is another solid waste item uh, that goes into a, a lot of detail. Um, and this is probably uh, one of the top two we get complaints about and have to enforce. So item E, the prohibition of significant outdoor storage of solid waste, including but not limited to decaying animal or vegetable matter, animal or human feces, trash, rubbish, garbage, rotting lumber, packing materials, scrap metal, pallets, fuel storage containers, tools, tires and wheels, furnaces, home appliances, furniture, plumbing fixtures, construction materials, amusement park devices, metal pipes, sorry, metal and pipes, rubber, glass bottles, machinery, wood, brick, cement block, all train vehicles, toys, bicycles, junk or any other substance in which flies, mosquitoes, mosquitoes or other disease-carrying insects, rodents or other vermin can be harbored.
Jesus.
That's all. And the first words, the first word's significant.
Which is subjective.
Sorry, I first want to talk.
We all.
You're up.
Go for it.
So, um, we did talk about this last meet, last month, correct? Uh, that's what I, that's what I thought. Now is this, um, so what we talked last month, um, is that going to encompass all of E or do we need to state E separately? Because we have, we have plenty of discussion on that.
Uh, I think we were talking about adding exemptions or um, different types of exceptions for outdoor storage for safe businesses, um.
Gotcha.
Yeah, to, to that extent.
Gotcha.
Well, this whole long list, all summed up in which lies, I mean, this entire store is going to have tires, that's a lot.
Yeah.
That's going to be there. We don't want to interfere with that, but the other word is significant. I mean, that's. Yeah.
One of my friends grows potatoes and tires, stack tires.
Yeah, I'm going to towel toilet outside three days after rain.
Get comfy.
So I must be telling you that, so.
Could we knock out all the detail and just be like, uh, things? No, that sounds horrible. That's even more subjective, but will it focus?
That we ask for, uh, and again, I'll just remind everybody, my opinion here, tread carefully on the eyesore versus health hazard.
Yep. Yeah, that's what I was going to focus on. Like, could we just pull out the disease-carrying insects, rodents or vermin and make it really, I don't know, kind of subjective on this one? Because like significant outdoor storage of solid waste, um, that uh, what's the word that I want to promote? Disease-carrying insects, rodents and other vermin.
Yeah, I mean, you can just cut all that out. Significant outdoor stocks, or just solid waste in which flies, mosquitoes and other disease-carrying insects, rodents or other vermin.
Yeah.
If you guys look ahead at the next four or five here, there's a lot of health, health, health mosquito, so.
Would.
Have, have we not given pretty, I mean, at the last meeting, we were pretty clear.
Yeah.
We wanted health hazards to be at the. Have have we not given pretty, I mean, the last meeting, we were pretty clear. We wanted health hazards to be at the top of our discussions. Okay.
And again, just going through the full list because we've not, we've not talked about them uh in their current form in the ordinance.
I I could.
Well, I just would remove all of those things. I don't want somebody. To have, you know, the complainer has one definition of rotting lumber, um, you know. And the person who's receiving the plan is a different definition in town, I mean, town staff has a. You know, have to define what rotting lumber is. I would just, you know, if it can be proven that the significant outdoor solid waste. You know, is a health hazard, that should be addressed.
And with specific exceptions for businesses and items related.
Sure, sure. I'd like to see a lot of. The prohibitions can't apply to so many of these businesses, in in my opinion.
Well, and I also think, again, we talked a lot about this and this doesn't get any attention, but you know, being neighborly, I mean, the whole point is that they've. If there was an issue, even with the business that had things there. You know, and for the for the operation of the business, you know. We don't have to have something written to have a conversation.
If I glance forward here, F, H, I and K are all health hazard. And I would say we're. Going to hit that.
Yeah.
There's two other bullet points there that we probably could talk about now, which one, we have the junk car. Slash. Restoration slash all these other different state statutes that already exist.
But I don't want to get in the conversation. Yeah, what I don't want to see E do with all of those lists there, I'll I'll all train vehicles. Well, I have all train vehicle. I would probably leave it out, right? But if somebody doesn't like an all train vehicle, because they don't like to look at it, they're next door or whatever, then they're going to say, you know, that's kind of a nuisance. Nuisance, it's really they don't like it, but let me tie it to that it may carry diseases and make a complaint. Well, I don't want something that specific. So.
That's already in our conversation for them to put in front of us is what I'm, so omitting that one right now. They're already working on getting us some kind of language to talk about.
Yeah, I got it. Okay, I'll stop.
The just I.
I wasn't going to address every little.
We're getting what you're asking.
More conversation.
I got you.
I find with eliminating the. Infestation of flies here, breeding grounds of mosquitoes there, accumulation of rubbish for health and safety over here. That's F, H, I and uh K.
K is recreational vehicles used to store solid waste.
Right. If it's a health hazard, if it's, you know, if I I think that to me that goes into the health hazard conversation.
Um, for me, I think we've had that complaint before, you know, because of like a rodent infestation. So basically tie it to.
Tie it to that. If someone wants to put eighty sets of disc brakes inside their old Volkswagen Jetta, I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
Cause nothing there's drawing.
Yeah.
This is my opinion though. I mean, again, I'm allowed to know.
Yeah, I mean. Are we all feeling good with those? That direction, alright. Um, and then the last one, um, I'll just kind of skip over because we discussed it in detail at the last meeting was the junk motor vehicle. So, um, it does state now that any junk motor vehicle without a current vehicle restoration permit. And or any abandoned manufactured home is prohibited.
We have that come.
Yes, and I believe we went into detail in that uh at the last November meeting.
So I know you said there's the last one, but I still have Jay here.
Oh, excuse me, yes.
And we still have a moratorium on the um RV.
Yes, it was extended.
Jay was extended.
Yeah, so.
What date was it extended to?
Yeah, it was.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So I I know the public out there can see JJ is use of recreational vehicle as a primary residence without permitted electric water.
Yeah.
Town currently has a moratorium. You are allowed to do that. Send and have been since leaning. So I'd just like to talk about it more. I'm not sure that there's enough language there for me.
Also keep in mind too, we'll create it, you know, we'll adopt it, you know, recommend it, town will vote on it or whatever, but we still have the ability to amend it.
Yeah, and and I mean, that's the point again. I mean, this was passed in October of twenty nineteen. Um, and that's what's, this is what staff's been working with.
Yeah. Which is. And biggie was just. Uh, I hate that for you guys. I I if 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 I can ask a question, Michael, and you don't need to answer this, maybe it's an attorney question. Clearly, I've looked over this way too much for my own good. Does it, I know this is not part of the UDO. Is there any legal? Backdoor for someone to go, hey, this is a construed as a land use ordinance or land or specifically a down zoning.
No.
And later, it can't be enforced because it wasn't in the UDO.
No, because there's no districts. There's there's no, this is, and and that's why I think some folks ask. Are there exemptions? And and again, of course, existing businesses. Would be grandfathered in in terms of the land use, but are there exemptions for businesses that have been here for twenty, thirty years? And the answer in this, unless it's called out specifically like agriculture is no. Because this is a public health and safety ordinance that is under the town's police power to protect the citizens. And is applied equally among every property owner in the town, not by district, so not land.
But okay, so again, there are no.
No doubt.
Backdoor to say that's down zoning and using my property.
No, not to, not to my knowledge, not as in the term.
Alright, thank you. I'll look forward to the next version of what we're seeing here.
That's really all I wanted to cover, so I'm going to kick it to Kevin to run through the presentation uh about administration and enforcement. And uh we have good discussion on that.
Kevin, while I'm getting that, I'll tell the public, if you don't mind, Chair, that uh the rest of this is going to be a little bit. Boring. It's not going to be about what's allowed and what's not allowed because that is not, the next version of that is just not in front of us yet.
Thank you.
This is going to be more about procedural. Sorry. Well, that we've been going over this for several meetings and we give input, um, and we've tried to look at these other examples for other towns. Because, you know, ours is really bad. So we're trying to come up some. We all kind of agreed scrap and start over. That is not as easy as it sounds. So we're giving lots.
Staff actually writes it, but based on all of this input.
Yeah, you're input here, right here. There's notes taken. That'll that'll go into the next conversation. January, at least come back, we can review the prohibitions and all that again. Uh, but the town staff has been instructed to. Bring it to us for input. We're giving that and it's just back and forth. Until we get something that clears this.
I mean, because we're not clairvoyant, at least not none of them. Um, because I'm not clairvoyant, I mean, this could be something we create that somehow isn't working, right? And somebody should share that with us, you know, come back. And give us the opportunity to adjust something as well.
I love having free time to talk. Cause uh.
I think that.
As they all left, oh.
Uh, I will, I will make comment.
Yeah.
Because I have, um, and that is. There are more people here that actually spoke tonight. I'm encouraging everybody, when somebody just says. I agree with what I see or I don't agree with what I see or do whatever it takes to keep a roar or do whatever it takes to not. You know, create a uh uh townwide. HOA, right? And that's input. That's in, it doesn't have to be eloquent, so. Encourage everybody to speak.
One of the biggest things we've learned in this UDO was early on, when the planning board was. Somewhere in the prime print, uh, public opinion is supposed to be weighted more heavily than maybe we. We felt, so we've been begging for it since. We love, I love having everyone here. One, 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 I don't want to get you in trouble. Or the chair, if you talk directly to me, I'll talk back.
I'm just letting him run down. We still got things to discuss. Are you ready, Kevin?
Do we have any um times for our steering committee, our UDO steering committee meetings?
It's.
So, sorry.
Don't hear.
You're talking about the UDO steering committee meetings next week?
Yeah.
Uh, I'll be emailing those tomorrow morning.
Awesome, thank you.
Don't listen to Brian, because it might be wrong.
Yeah.
Got it wrong one time.
But he showed up.
You ready, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Uh, so just to go into what we're going to be talking about tonight, just wanted to go through an overview. At the last meeting, uh, we discussed a few nuisance prohibitions, five different. It's out in Southern County. Uh, gave the board's feedback on what they want to see. Some provisions and how they want them to be applied. With applicable options and senses. Uh, tonight, we are going to look at administration. Best practices. Following procedures and processes. Blowing around investigation response and notice requirements. Mobile of junk abandoned nuisance vehicles. Nuisance abatement procedures and civil penalties. Um, the ultimate goal uh for tonight is to get feedback and direction for staff. On how they want to see these types of. Proceedings implemented into the ordinance.
And one real quick thing, again, based on discussions we had tonight, this is just. Just having a discussion here. These are ideas. This is Kevin coming up with, this is what I want to see. I just want to make that clear.
We want more feedback for the the text.
I got you.
Specifically. So we already did this, I'll skip over. In attachment C of your package, uh, for the nuisance ordinance administration section for the town. Uh, you will see. How code enforcement is administered for uh nuisance ordinance. Uh, you, in this section, you'll see areas highlighted um that are applicable to. Some things we're going to be talking about. So the first highlighted section says it shall be the duty of the planning and zoning department. Uh, acting and by and through its delegates, either careful whether or not public nuisance exists. And then that we act through complaints on that, that's where. You know. Uh, for owner notification.
I want to clarify that again, since there's public here, you live in, that means you're not going out searching.
Correct, we're complaint driven all the time.
And this is our current, again, experiment. We'll have this whole thing in there.
Uh, the next highlighted section is o- owner notification, uh, basically. Basically, uh, it goes through one of, you know, when we receive a complaint, we determine that a public nuisance exists. Uh, the planning is knowing the department shall get written notice of its determinations in order to evade the nuisance to the owner. Occupant and property agent if flip pool. Um, and then it just states, this is how the the notice must be transmitted, which is uh through regular mail. Uh. Not common at all, an officer authorized the circle to warn. But basically, notification to the property owner uh for their mailing address on bottom. So said uh section. See, the last highlighted section just shows where the the language and the code for civil penalties is found. You'll see that. Uh, for civil penalties, uh, the the standard's fifty dollars per per civil penalty. Each day is considered a separate viable offense. So when we talk about civil penalties and fines, that's where that language comes from in our enforcement uh administration section. Overall, with that, I'm just trying to show you all where this uh administration stuff comes from in our.
Kevin, I have a question. So when we're talking about civil penalties and say. Say we've got um a renter and a landlord, say just a civil penalty was fifty bucks. Um, and. So that goes to the uh. Property owner.
Correct.
That was my question. Okay.
Right. So we're going to go back to the same case examples we. Did last uh meeting, uh, just to reiterate, Forest City Marion and the bar were selected due to regional location. Western part of the state, uh, and they also had some code sections that we received direction from the board on what they wanted. Be implemented into our. Uh, such as visibility standards, dump vehicle allowances and provisions for outdoor storage related to commercial businesses. Uh, Henderson County, because they were basically almost a copy and paste. Uh, from our our nuisance ordinance from theirs. Uh, and lastly, Archer Lodge in Carolina, as they are a newer incorporated community that has agricultural roots. Uh, out, out east. Okay. So our first section is investigation responsive requirements, qualities for the. A lot of language on the screen. In this chart. Uh, you will see some of the investigation response in those requirements. Basically showing uh for each case example, the code reference to their, to where the uh. The language for notices, uh, service of notice requirements and who enforces the ordinance is found in their, their code. Uh, common trends are that the. You know, the department uh or it's the department. Designated by the city manager uh is traditionally uh who would enforce the ordinance. Archer Lodge did have a um. Did state code administration, code administrator as someone who enforces ordinance. Basically, it's city manager or or doesn't. And then, uh. Notice requirements. Um, commonly, you'll notice, you know, say. In our notices that. That the property identification. Um, citing the code of violations, corrective actions in the time period to correct the violations. Um, those are standard in in most of these case examples. Uh, with their notice requirements stated in their code. For Mills River, the planning and zoning department uh is a responsible enforcement. Uh. Party, uh, notice requirements pretty much are standard with Henderson County, property description. Description of the nuisance, summary of owner's responsibilities. Specific verse for abatement, not to exceed thirty days, and then appeal language, uh, all required in our administration section we just went through. Uh. Now here's the questions we have are, you know, my my first question should be. What should the title of the responsible party be for enforcement? Should we keep it planning and zoning department to be code administrator? Uh, that. I would, I'd like to ask the board. That's a quick clarification on that. Or no. I I'd buy with that and be myself.
Doesn't he?
Yeah.
That'd be uh. Planning.
We we don't have a big staff.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, as as Mr. Smith stated, we don't have enough staff to do a lot of what we need to do right now anyway, so. I'm I'm all keeping it as designated.
Yeah.
Keeping as it's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Perfect. Uh, thoughts on notice requirements? What should be your. Notices when we issue a notice of violation? Right now, we're looking.
Right now.
Henderson counties are are closest.
Correct, and and just so you have in front of you, if you go back to attachment C administration. Um, the second highlighted section at the bottom of. First page for attachment C.
Mm-hmm.
You will see the requirements that we uh are required to put in our notices when we issue a notice of violation. So. My question is. What are your thoughts on the notice requirements and is there anything we need to add, remove? Uh, that's I'm.
Has the notification system that's currently in place created any issue?
Those are not my.
So, um. If I was reading correctly, ours does not include. The electronic delivery. The Henderson County does.
Correct, ours is not.
That would be nice. I'd rather be emailed.
So.
I'm just saying.
That's in the next column though, right?
Yeah, so on the chart, um, it's in the bottom right corner.
Right.
Yeah, personal delivery, electronic delivery, first class mail or by officer authorized to serve a warrant. Really like that.
Well, I I I don't.
Mail, should it be first class mail or should it be certified mail?
Certified, certified mail. You want their signature.
Oh, it says, right.
Certified mail.
Certified mail. I would suggest first class mail and certified mail.
It would not include.
And the reason behind that is. People can duck a certified mail. It can it can alone a post office box for a while. If first class mail does not come back as returned to sender, generally the courts held that it was delivered.
And and best practice for us as well, uh, through our departments, we do. Um. Or, you know, for citations and final notices, we will do a first class mail and a certain certified. Uh, to make sure that the person receives it, because sometimes. My observations, a lot of the certified mail gets bounced back, but they'll get the first class letter.
So is electronic delivery included?
It is not included in all.
I, we don't, if we don't have that information though, I mean, this is. Wouldn't complain driven, this is.
We have an email address for the person that the the each city businesses violation. As a courtesy, we will, we will send that. Anyway, we can get that information.
My only, my only concern there is we live in a world and anybody who has a cell phone knows this, that we get something that's heavy and pay this or we don't do this. This is a violation. You didn't pay your your traffic or just whatever else and it's fraud, right? And I don't want to see that. You didn't pay your your traffic or just whatever else, and it's fraud, and I don't wanna see that. I wanna add to that by sending an email, because that can, somebody can take that and say, hey, you violated the. The nuisance ordinance, you know, you know, you need to send us a thousand dollars or represent your whatever, so I've been denying.
Well, see, my thing would be, I would see the email and then I would check the mail. For the actual complaint. I try, I try every day.
I'm concerned about people who they they do that, and it's probably my need, but why add to that?
That's just my. Okay, so. Is there consensus with certified mail?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I may clarify, certified mail only? Or or just having it as an opt?
Option.
Okay.
Option.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, the.
Do, we do find it helpful, like, again, you know, moving towards more community focused enforcement. I'm sending a courtesy warning before a formal notice of violation, you know, that that's much better done, uh, just as a regular letter.
Absolutely. Keep that up, that's that's the way to go.
How about when civil penalties are imposed due first class and certified, but maybe for the. Whether there isn't fines potentially imposed to do this first class, is that?
Sounds good to me. Well, y'all, thanks.
Thoughts on time to to evade the nuisance, so that, you know. There's a due date for compliance, a compliance due date on the notice of violation when it's issued, or or the notice. Is thirty days, right now, it's up to a maximum of thirty days, uh, in our code, is is that? Is thirty days sufficient, uh, for compliance? Oh, I apologize. There you go.
So Forest City has an initial notice.
Ten days for initial notice, uh, fifteen days for order of abatement, which is separate, uh, from the initial notice, that's. Basically stating that in order of abatement, that if you do not remedy. These violations that the that the municipality is going to evade the nuisance. That's separate.
What do we currently have, thirty days or no more than thirty days?
When when does the thirty days start?
So thirty, so.
It'd be dated on the date your your letter might's dated. That when your thirty days starts, or?
The date of the letter, correct.
Date of the letter.
Yes, sir. So.
Wouldn't short that.
No, I wouldn't, I want this to be generous, I want it to be rare.
A little bit more generous.
Yeah.
I'm coming, I'm thinking more as a landlord in this aspect. Because it would take me longer to evict somebody than it would to evade the problem that you have with the property. So, um, and especially since that fine and that complaint is coming to the actual property owner. Um. Cause it, it usually takes, for anybody in a lease, it usually takes thirty days to get them out of the lease. So I'm really thinking forty-five to sixty days for abatement. What do y'all think? Don't all speak at once.
Yeah, I'll try to think.
Think faster, Mike, think faster. What y'all think?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
So trying to, trying to picture this in my head, the next column over is the courtesy warning implemented in the ordinance.
That column is just showing that in these other case examples, do they have courtesy warnings? Implemented in their ordinance, and you'll see that four out of five of them do not, and then regard does, but it's not explicit. Like, it doesn't say courtesy warning in the.
So so I'm a huge fan of this courtesy warning. Okay, if it's a really a health hazard, I I choose to believe no one out there wants to endanger us intentionally. Really like this courtesy, I do I want that thirty days to start ticking, then do I want abatement to jump in at thirty days, I mean. You're skipping over on these columns because we currently don't have the courtesy warrant implemented in our ordinance, is that correct?
It's not written in the ordinance, correct.
So I I'm, before I answer the days, I wanna know what you guys think about the courtesy. Starting there, I I'm sorry, we talked about being good neighbors, I I want this less formal conversation.
So, well, let's let's get this, um, kinda weeded out a little bit, when it comes to the courtesy warning. Um, does that include, is that included in my abatement if it becomes a true violation, like, if I don't do anything in the next week about it? And you have to file an actual violation against me? Is that when it starts, is the violation, or is it at the courtesy?
So the procedure would be is that we get a complaint, right? All right, we would go investigate, determine if the complaint is valid for what our nuisance provisions are.
Yep.
Uh, issue a courtesy warning with a time period, uh, to to correct the 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 valid complaint. So basically, that that is, it's an initial. Reach, it's basically initially the town reaching out to notify them as a courtesy of of this code violation and corrected.
Yes.
Tell me the 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 means of that delivery.
First class, no.
Okay.
And that and that is not in our code, but we have done that in the past for best practice, and then also if we have contact information. We reach out to the potential violator.
I I that's why I'm asking to take a step back, I want there to be a lot of emphasis on this courtesy notification up, I'd like to think people are. They're gonna weed it out, let's just assume we reduce the, you know, the eyesore complaints. Let's assume it's an actual health hazard, it's been verified, we still should be starting with the courtesy notification, in my opinion. Where are you guys at on that, or you wanna come out of the gate guns blazing and?
Hundred percent I'm up for the courtesy, I just need to know if it starts at the current, the forty-five days, the thirty or forty-five days, if it starts at courtesy. Then, um, then it's not really a courtesy at all, if you ask me.
The compliance clock would start at the formal notice of violation, so again, the courtesy warning is to inform folks. But some people don't even know we have a nuisance ordinance.
Exactly.
Courtesy warning is to basically educate folks that the town has this, we've received a complaint, we've determined it's valid. And basically to reach out to us to discuss it.
Yep, okay.
So that's my question, in that column, courtesy warning implemented in ordinance, you have a yes, but not explicit, and regard everyone else doesn't know, is there any reason why we can't have? An expressed?
Well, it's dependent on the severity of the, you know, the provision, I mean, do you wanna have a courtesy warning if someone has actively leaking septic system or is. Sewage is discharging into a creek?
Question, that's what I think, are you asking us that? What would we like?
Would you like courtesy warnings?
There you go.
That's the direction we're.
And that would be the first contact that potential violator would receive is the courtesy warning.
Correct.
And then how long are you gonna wait to issue an official warning?
Then we would, and then the whatever day we cut, the number of days that come up, it starts not the date of the courtesy. Notification, but whatever the formal notification.
Mr. Paulson makes an excellent point, thirty days for a notice violation, but what about what's the time period, uh, to correct it or courtesy warning? Is there, you know, could it be fifteen days?
There there has to be a timeline there. So that it triggers the the formal notification.
Yeah, thirteen days, two weeks, I think somebody would respond at that point, and if if we're focused on health and hazards, yeah. Then, you know, and it then we have to have some some time commitment there, so, I mean, something that's. Uh, that that creates action on the department.
So, so I'm up for adding the courtesy warning, um, to the ordinances so that people know. You know, hey, somebody gets a complaint, somebody's gonna come to talk to me first, they're not just gonna slam me down. Um. Yes, that definitely for sure, um, when it comes to. What was the other thing you were talking about, Mike? Sorry, brain farted.
I I was saying that we're focused on, you know, not what what.
Courtesy, thank you, thank you, so when it comes, since we are in the realm of, uh. Uh, hazards, uh, health hazards, I would say like seven days for the courtesy. For you to call the town back would be ample time, what do you think?
Well, I could be gone for a week, so, you know, I would do fifteen days. Um, you know, um, from the note, from the courtesy notification, and then thirty days beyond that for a remedy.
I say forty-five on the remedy. I I like that, what what do y'all think?
I like that, fifteen and forty-five.
All right, so fifteen and forty-five, and then, um, consensus on the the courtesy warning implementing in language into the code.
Yes.
That step is more important to me right now than the actual dates.
Huge.
What you think, Brad? You're quiet.
I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about codifying the cour- courtesy warning. Um, if you've got a, if you've got a circumstance that needs to be rectified right now. And you need to go ahead and and and, and I think we we've all, we've heard the word common, two words common sense in this room eighteen times tonight. Um, you know, the the individual that's that's responsible for, uh, who is delegated to to. You know, enforce this situation, if if he runs across an open system or something where. That's adjacent to a elementary school or something, that's that's clearly a a a a. A a red hot situation, then I I don't think a courtesy warning is.
And we add that into the language.
I don't think it's applicable, and I think if you, if you do, and if you are going to use a courtesy warning. Um, for things that aren't red hot and and, you know, life, health, life, safety, you know, oriented. Then then somehow or another, you need to also incorporate. A side of of the ordinance that is involved and possibly some pictures, and somehow or another. Tie that to, you know. The this, while this is a courtesy, it still means something. And 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 there's a way that that the town attorney can figure out a way to write that. Um, you know, we've we've given you a courtesy warning, um, and 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 the courtesy warning is is, um. It's something that that beca- because you don't have a a smoking problem here. To use the relatively recent, recent occurrences that have been going on around here. Um, you know, use the, have the have the discretion to use the courtesy warning, but also have the courtesy warning. Drafted in such a way that it still has some teeth.
Kevin, could you find us any examples where there's more than one bucket on this, like an urgent bucket? I I'm sorry, I just, I don't.
But have some language that allowed you to.
Yeah, you.
Bypass that.
Yeah, you gotta, yeah, I think it's critical that you be, you you have an ability to to. If you, I'm I'm concerned about if you codify and mandate it, and it goes all the way to a court of law. Then you're gonna get some sharp attorney to say, well, my my client never received a curse one, and that's mandated by your code. You know, and that, you know, that's that's that would be unenforcement.
I think we'd take that feedback and do some additional research and try to fill something into the ordinance, and and we will have the town.
I like that.
But I'm, for the record, I'm all for a courtesy warning, I'm all for picking up the phone, I'm all for taking the trunk out and going. Walking out and knocking on somebody's door, that's that's critically important, but it's sometimes you need to, you know. You need to slap leather instead of, you know, pull a pin at. Yeah.
Time issue.
All right, um, any more questions on this topic before I move on?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, extensions, I, uh, so right now. We are allowed per the code to give, uh, extensions up to thirty days, as long as significant progress is made to remove the violations from the property, so. There's no, there's not a limit on the amount of, uh, extensions we can grant as, uh, staff. When we work with a property owner, long as they make significant progress, what are your thoughts as a board on that?
Is that in attachment C and like the longer version?
Yeah, so it's in attachment, uh, yes, attachment C, it's not highlighted, but it's, uh. It's halfway down the first page, B. Um. B for, uh. I apologize. Actually, C four.
Uh, third, fourth sentence and extensions. Second sentence, an extension may be granted if the extension does not increase the risk to public or safety.
So, and then it also says extensions may not be granted unless the owner occupant shows substantial improvement towards abating the nuisance, and it shall be for a period no longer than thirty days.
I'm okay with that.
And how about and request such extension in writing? Have have something in writing.
So we have compliance extension forms we use.
Okay.
And that we started that as a, uh, department best practice. Um, are are you saying you would like that in the code?
No, no, if you're using that as a best practice, and I mean, you you administratively, that's fine.
Okay.
So, not to get too far in the weeds here, I know that's not what anyone wants me to do right now, but substantial is a word that. We're giving discretion to our designee on this, correct?
Correct.
I I like that, I I also would like the resident to have an opportunity to. Maybe contest whether or not substantial. Uh, improvement toward abating the nuisance hazard, you know, occurred, if in fact they're told it hasn't. I'd like, I like in a, you know. Them to have an avenue to come back and say, I'm busting my ass here, it is happening, give me that time, sorry.
An appeal process.
Uh, okay. So is there somewhere we could at least look at that language at the next meet, or is that?
That, so the appeal process would not involve appealing a compliance extension, it would be appealing the violations in total. So in saying that I'm appealing staff's decision to determine that, um, these vehicles on my property are. Junk vehicles per our nuisance ordinance, so five extensions, go ahead, sorry.
No, the formal appeals process is for whether it exists or.
Or not.
Or not.
Not the.
Okay, so let's scratch the formal appeals process for a second, go back to defining or arguing about substantial improvement toward abating. Look, again, I hope these are very rare, I hope they're only significant when they get to this point, and I really hope that everyone's making an earnest effort to evade it. Wha- what if it comes to, hey, I need more time, and the discretion of the designee is, it's not substantial?
That is a good point.
I want them to have the opportunity to come and talk to somebody, that's it, I don't know what that looks like, I'm not liable.
Have you failed in the past to grant an extension to everybody?
So typically, i- in my experience working in the field, um, you know, long as they. From from how I, you know, enforcement is done, as long as they make some form of progress, so I I will, in the compliance extension form, I will have actions. And I will ask the property owner, do you think this is attainable to complete by this compliance extension deadline, and they will say yes or no. And I'm willing to work with property owner based off that.
I I really like the mutual consent and definitions upfront, I I I'm a fan of that, I I don't. I don't know any other way to say this, I do not want any resident to think that that the designee is a bad person, a bad guy, that's not the. That's not what's going on here, and if I, uh, for me, if I feel like you've shut me down, you're a bad guy, I don't care what the conversation is, if you've shut me down. So I just want them to have that, an opportunity to not be shut down like that, so that makes me feel better, there is some type of longhand. Agreement of of mutual consent.
A best practice, uh, beforehand with the compliance extension forms.
Does that make sense, everyone, that that's what we're?
Absolutely.
And just to state too, I mean, we are very lenient with this, there are properties.
I know you are.
We've worked with for two, two and a half years, or what you could consider, um, neighborhood eyesores. You know, a an eighty year old man, you know, that can't clean up, you know, as much as a normal person could. And Kevin worked with that individual, checked in with them every month or so, and two years later, it was all addressed.
You guys know how much I respect and don't envy what you guys do, I I want this code. Once it's, once it's put and adopted into ordinance, I want it to protect that group of people from the next person sitting in those chairs five tins years down the road. I know you guys have good hearts, I have no doubt, I'll argue with anybody. What's that?
Yeah, I mean, I like the open service and the way it's done, we have the ability to change that structure at any point.
We can also look at different verbiage, you know, substantial just may not be the right word, you know, here I am looking at other ones, you know, it could just be tangible. You know, that stuff hasn't moved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Demonstrative progress.
Didn't mean to distract, I I like that, if we could just give us some options.
Work right now, but yeah, demonstrate, I mean, you can demonstrate to me would be, it looks different than when I, you know. You've made some progress, again, they're trying to be as neighborly as possible, maintain as part of like.
So, um, if I may, um. We're looking, so is there consensus to look at changing the verbiage of substantial in that extension language uh to something more? Demonstrative, okay.
Yes, for me.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright. We are the.
You know what, I I'll offer this. This is outside of what what I'm doing right now. You find another eighty-year-old man who has a hard time thinking of something. Call me, I'll find poor young man whose heart will be going over this and and helping them out.
Announce that the next town council.
Yeah, you know, I will. So, you know, I'll be happy to do that. So, that helps a man out. That's what I'm gonna do.
Right. Uh, the next section we're gonna ru- go into is the removal of junk abandoned and nuisance vehicles. Um, in this chart. Uh, you will see some of the the uh. How how the case examples have certain sections in their codes, uh, particular. Uh, do they have an administrative section specifically for junk abandoned and nuisance vehicles? Do they have a definition section? Uh, do they have a section that refers to state statutes? Do they have a section? Required by law, general statutes, pre-towing requirements, post-towing requirements and language for probable cause hearings. And then lastly, do they have an exceptions section? Some of these ordinances have. Have this language outside of the nuisance ordinance or have separate sections. It it it's dependent on how, you know, municipality wants it in play, um. Basically, I'll just tell you that the pre-towing, the post-towing and the probable cause hearings. Are required by general statutes uh for removals of vehicles. Property abandoned, junked, um, and I will go in a little further in a bit, but um. Some of the questions I I want to ask, uh. Do you want a separate section in the nuisance ordinance specifically for removal of junk abandoned and nuisance vehicles?
That's why I'm trying to think about like what we did last time.
And this is, this is the town, let's be clear, right? The town removing those vehicles from that property.
Correct.
Yeah, so that so you can see all the yeses here that the town, a lot of places, it is commonplace for the municipality. You know, if if a property owner has a nuisance or junk vehicle on the property has been non-responsive, non-cooperative. The the town will go remove that and charge the owner for that removal. Now, we don't currently have that in our ordinance, but as we talked about in the beginning. We are comparing ourselves to other examples and we want the planning board's feedback about whether this would be appropriate from those river or not.
No.
No.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I agree.
State state law allows it and there are very detailed procedures to protect the property owner and the vehicle owner, you know, from an illegal government taking. Uh, it does get complex, but again, this is common in a lot of places.
I think we talked last time that we're still building that around whether it was health and hazards or. And I mean, if I have, I know. If I have. If I have, I'm not a I'm not a farmer, um, it's easy to tell, but um. You know, if I have an old tractor, you know, like three acres. They meet in uh definition of abandoned vehicle, right? So if I want to get any time, look it up and all of all. Maybe wouldn't, but so I I mean, no, I don't want to treat any of that. If it on the midnight, but that just opens the door that I don't like what that looks like. And I'd like to see the town calling off of my neighbor's yard. It's not good.
So just to clarify as well, um, in general statutes, you can only remove a vehicle from private property. Without the consent of the property owner if it is declared a public health hazard. So a nuisance vehicle. You can't remove a junk, the town can't remove a junk vehicle from private property unless it's determined to be. Um, a nuisance vehicle per se.
And then.
That's in state statutes.
Right, and that's so then you tied it to health and health or hazard, right?
Correct.
That's what state ordinance said.
Now, these post, the pre-towing procedures, the post tow- towing procedures. The probable cause hearing sections, that is all in state statutes, you know. What I'm trying, well, what we are trying to ask is if we want that in our nuisance ordinance to have clear. Guidelines for basically tying into state statutes, saying that this, you know, from these other case examples. It's common to have those in the ordinance and that that's a question we're prompting the board.
So we talked earlier about, again. Eliminating that list and something that's a health or hazard, but this would fall under that.
So these requirements are required by state statute. Basically, what we're trying to ask the board is, do you want them in our ordinance or do you want to leave them out?
So so Mike, even if we.
For clarity.
We're not talking about defining junk abandoned nuisance right now, but if we did have, let's say we had the need to remove a vehicle. For health reasons. A vehicle is different than something else for health reasons.
Because there's specific procedures.
If someone has a, you know, something else that we, it's not a ve- a vehicle has its own set of rules to remove even under the health hazard.
So, you know, fear of having thirty-five people be holding you in the door. You know, it doesn't, if if there's literally a health issue involved. It doesn't ma- it was not gonna be the right word. It doesn't matter what the container of that is hazard is. If it got to that point, even if it's, we should have the ability to mitigate.
The container is shouldn't be our conversation. If we agree it's a health hazard. If we want to go that far, if we do, we have to have something separate for vehicles.
There are specific procedures for abatement of vehicles.
I think everyone gets that. We want to remove a Tupperware bin because of a health hazard. I don't need to go to general statute.
Because my, that's my point is that, yes, it does have to be separate for vehicles, but it doesn't matter whether it's a Tupperware container. Or the trunk of a nineteen, you know, fifty-five Chevy, which probably.
If I'm understanding them correctly, then your answer needs to be changed from no to yes on his question.
Yes, my concern, but um. I mean, if it's health hazard, it doesn't matter whether it's a vehicle or a container for a hazard issue.
And then the question.
So should we have the ability to remove the remove the vehicle because it's it's a health hazard? So we define that, I guess, right? The whoever the whoever the the. Whoever is in for our delegate, whatever the word.
A nuisance vehicle?
Yeah.
And and that's what we talked about prior to to add uh the definition for nuisance vehicles in the ordinance, but what I'm. What we're trying to to ask is, there are requirements by state statutes for pre-towing, post-towing and hearing requirements. Do we want that in the ordinance or do we want to leave it out?
So you're asking about copying and pasting. From state to local.
Correct. Based off these best practices, um.
If if you desire the town to be able to remove vehicles.
Correct.
We can't define them differently than the state by saying that it has to be at health, but you said that included in the state.
We're bound to what is in the general statutes.
But you said at least not um health and hazard was part of statute.
And so a vehicle can only be a a junked or abandoned vehicle can only be removed from private property without the property owner's consent. If it is declared a public health and safety hazard.
Uh, I I don't know why we wouldn't.
Yeah, I I think you would want to post the pro- the procedural details there. To cover our butts if it ever, God helps if it ever comes to that. I don't want it. I don't. But at least the process should be copied and pasted, is that?
If it's not part of the, if it's not part of the new nuisance ordinance that we adopt, we can't.
No, general statutes would still allow that.
Yeah.
It's just for clarity to have it in the code itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, you understand, general statutes say we can do that if it becomes a health hazard, period. But but why wouldn't we post that process?
No, what you're saying that we can't, we can or can't to it if it's not part of our nuisance order.
So long, so if it personal statutes. It it's just for clarity, basically. That's what I'm trying to to get at.
I think if if, yes, for clarity, it should be part of our needs and if we're allowed to do it, whether we put it or not, it's not.
Because we have to follow state statute procedure.
Well, then I would absolutely.
Have to, so why not?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
See, I don't want to confuse people because so like if. I i- if I got a violation for a junked vehicle and um. You know, this, it would be walking up the chain of command. It would really have to do with the state. Not necessarily with my town.
If we have the ability to do some and we haven't notified our residents and we have the ability to do that, as we are going to do that, then I don't think.
Only allowed under the health hazard. I mean, the state, that's all they allow. They don't allow it.
And the only reason we bring this up too is because if you look at Henderson County, the seconds and the last line, they don't have it. And and right now, we don't either. So again. We can include the statutory requirements, but I think the bigger question is. Does the town want, uh, excuse me, does the planning board want the town to be involved with removing vehicles from people's property? Because if the answer is no, there is no need to include this. And if that decision can't be made now, um, we we can, you know, bookmark this for another meeting and we can draft. Other sections of the ordinance and come back to this in the draft first. We don't want to pressure you for an answer tonight, but these are, these are the important topics we're trying to get. Uh, some direction on to draft.
So how do you bring this viol- this violation, whatever the word is? How do we bring it to closure if it's just uh? The owners, I I get it. It's a health hazard to everybody near me, proving it beyond a shadow of a doubt. But we're not gonna.
Take them to court. I mean, we.
That's what matters. Alternatively, we don't take it. What happens?
So I mean, uh, going through the process, you would find them and we've done that before where people have ignored us and thousands of dollars of fines have racked up. And we've had no contact from anyone. They just ignore us. And so the next step. That is in our ordinance currently is we would basically use the town attorney. Go to court and basically have a judge issue an in- an injunction or an order to that property owner. Because that carries the letter of the law more than a notice of a violation on town letter.
With with that said, the alternative is what I wanted to hear. Now that I hear that, no, I don't want to be in the business of removing cars.
Correct. I do not want the town enforcing that.
Thank you.
Say, no.
Great, no, great.
Thanks. I just needed to hear the alternative.
Sorry.
Sorry.
That being said, let's uh.
Hold on, Mike's gonna ask one more time.
Yeah, I'm right. I got it. I encourage you.
Thanks, I'm gonna skip.
So we're happy to have a meeting to move.
Alright, next section, uh nuisance abatement procedures. Uh, here for the case examples, you will see their code section are referenced to where uh nuisance abatement procedures are referenced in their code. Um, whether or not they use uh municipality abatement versus court injunction or order of abatement. And then also the appeals process. Um, as mentioned before. As a municipality. You have the authority to abate nuisances without going through the courts. Their. Judicial um order of abatement is a. It is a is a tool that can be used for abatement, but just to clarify, a town, let's say you issue a notice of violation. Alright, compliance isn't met, then you issue, you can, the town can issue an order of abatement with. Certain amount of time to remove the violations from the property. And if that's not met, the town has the authority to remove those without going through the courts. That that's what is meant by municipal um order of abatement.
So the state has its own rules with the cars and we just had that. This is for everything else. Regardless of how we define that in the future, this is for everything else. I I'm sorry, I don't want to be re- I was a repo man, my first job out of the Marine Corps. It's not a fun job and I damn sure don't want you guys doing it.
So the question.
So I I'm I'm not looking at the the municipality.
So more through the through the courts, is that correct?
Again, I want it to be rare and the exception, but yeah.
Yeah, I agree, but so good question.
You don't have staff. You don't have staff. You don't have the staff to do it. Do it through the court. You got a town attorney on retain. Do it. Then do it.
Is that? Okay, perfect.
Mr. Cole, did you get your question out?
Uh, yeah. Uh, the minute you haven't had uh undertaking an abatement.
No, but I mean, we've had a budget line item that's been unused for a number of years for that and I'll I'll give an example. Um, there's an abandoned property at the corner of Banner Farm and uh Haywood Road. Where there is an RV that's been abandoned and opened there for a number of years. Um, that we've received many complaints about and have had specific people reach out to us to remove it. Um, that property owner is deceased, no next of kin, um, basically it's an abandoned property. And so again, just clarifying, uh, we will not be able to do that in this instance. We would have to go through the courts. Um, and ultimately, if the property owner, if there's no next of kin. Um, it it would just be an order from the judge to potentially know the one. So it does, I'm not suggesting either way, but you know, it does create.
So. This is just again for education on this, but so why haven't, why haven't we undertaken an abatement there?
Uh, because no one's done it before in the town's history.
Yes.
So there, no, I'm serious. There there's a budget line item in our department that I discovered. I think my second year here was unused. For this specific purpose and no one had ever done it. And when we had the nuisance discussion with council in March of this year. Um, before there was some public input from the community about it. Council was totally okay with us going forward with abatement and using those funds to abate uh nuisances. Now, again, that may have changed based on some of the community feedback. And so we're asking the planning board how you feel about that and if it should be included in the draft ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I fall on both sides because in the case that you speak of. You know, I would hate to have to go through the boards and all of that, just remove that. Um, but also to your point earlier. Um, Brian, that. We're doing things that might uh be enforced by people ten, fifteen years from now who are different than. Than you all. We we don't want the unintended consequence that you want. I don't know, is there a way to have a? Uh. The the ability to have the municipal municipality like abate the situation. At their discretion or?
So that is written in the ordinance um with the option to go through the courts for abatement. So.
So.
Order of abatement.
Saying is we can do it either way now?
We can do it either way now.
Oh, that's. Seems to me that's the answer.
I mean, we're not really looking at, again, we're not searching for things. We're not trying to obey things. Um.
I mean, even if we do it as a municipality.
Yeah.
They can still appeal it, right? Did it as a municipality? But they would. Down to me like we're good. We have two options.
Okay. Alright. Go. Just uh one thing I wanted to mention, I know we're, it's getting a little late, um. You know, Richard Duckard, we talked about it before from UNC School of Government. Um, he does have a a blog post that I found interesting that basically saying. Um, just as we talked through judicial orders have advantages to determining the scope and nature of a nuisance. Uh, so. There are a lot of procedures to follow as a municipality for abaintments. Um, and judicial orders have advantages to reduce liabilities. That's basically the gist.
Yeah, and I wouldn't want to put anybody in harm's way on the staff and I would.
Especially with junk.
Abatement go directly.
Yeah, okay. Uh, civil penalties, fun. Alright.
And this is our last major topic.
Okay, yeah. Alright, um, in this chart, you're gonna see for the case examples, how civil citations are issued. Um, if the municipality or the county has a due date for payments and then ways to collect. Um. You'll see traditionally that it's fifty dollars a day, um, and each day is a separate infallible offense. Just like what we have now. Uh, you also will see fines issued by notice of violation. So. Say twenty-five dollars for the first notice of violation and seventy-five dollars for the second subsequent. Um, you will see where there's a maximum accumulation mentioned. Um. Due date wise. Right now, the town does not have a payment due date for civil penalties. Um. And then all of these case examples, ways to collect are through civil action, basically to collect uh penalties. So. I guess, question here is, right now, we have fifty dollars a day. So I guess question here is, right now, we have fifty dollars a day. Uh, when a civil citation issued is it's fifty dollars a day, each day is a separate final offense. That directly relates from general statutes, um. Do we want to go based off the, at the board's, um, direction? Do you wanna keep fifty, fifty dollars a day as a standard for citations? Uh, or do we wanna change that and base it off notice of violations? You know, that, we're looking for feedback on, on that.
Well, I wouldn't charge a fee.
So this is when we get to civil citation. So they've been notified. We're at citations and in our code, citations are fifty dollars. Each civil citation is based off a daily running, uh, fine of fifty dollars a day. And each is a separate confinable.
From one day?
So from the date the civil citation is issued until.
Basically, it's issued after the other day till we.
Yeah, so we, we would go through the courtesy warning, multiple notices of violation, usually two. Um, and then after that's completed, there's no, no progress, no response. That's when we move to citation.
And my other question would be, I can see that they move people. Yeah, sometimes, you know, one say they're fine, but not wanna be in that business, wanna be good neighbors. But I would also keep in mind, is there the ability to just racks up to whatever amount doesn't matter? For that to ultimately be waived in certain circumstances like your example of the eighty year old gentleman, you couldn't remember it, I mean.
We never fined him because he worked with us the entire time.
But I just want.
But, um. I think town council's specific question is what the maximum should be.
Yeah.
Um, I'll defer to Kevin, but I believe the only authority to waive fines is the courts. Or is it not waivable?
Don't wanna give a direct answer for sure, but I.
We have that question.
But town council is not.
I know, but you. Sorry, you have discretion to say we're not gonna, we're not gonna start the filing process, right?
Well, we base that off the ordinance directory. This is what we're talking about.
Say, what, what did you say? The town council's?
So. Waiving fines and, and it's not legal for any town official or body, including the elected officials to waive fines.
But what, what did town council say about the maximum? Did you?
That they wanted the planning board to look at a maximum because when it was just me on staff, there was a violation where they were sent to citation. I was pulled in a hundred other different directions, unfortunately forgot about it, and the fines had racked up to, you know, an, an unreasonable amount. Um, and so town council specifically asked the planning board to look at a maximum total accumulation. As you can see, like in Marion, North Carolina. They have a five thousand dollar total maximum. And so council has asked us for it to look at that.
But, but those are total for subsequent violations.
No, 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 for the same violation where multiple citations are issued.
That's definitely not what it says here. It does say per, it says first violation, not notice of.
For Marion, you're correct.
Yeah.
But, uh, the town council instance, we're talking about one violation where fines have continued to rack up.
Yeah.
Due to non.
Just, just to clarify what I, what I read there, I want separate violations to be treated separately. I, I don't want a total. I don't get, if I get ten speeding tickets, I don't get maxed out after five. Hang on, just go speed.
So our, our civil citations are based on the amount of days the property remains in violation.
Which is fine with me. The Marion one doesn't read that way. I don't like the Marion.
Correct, it's based off violation.
Good, great. Maximum, I've, per violation, I feel there should be one, it should be, I like to hear, but. I'm not, I'm.
That's, that's the thing I'm trying to weigh is because we're not looking at eyesores here.
Right.
We are looking at public health. So we want that to accrue and be fixed quickly. We want it all to, to, to be wrapped up in a week. That would be like great for everybody, wrapped up the same day. But, um. So, and we have fifty dollars a day that's on the books right now.
Correct.
We just don't have a maximum, like monthly maximum or.
I think that what we're trying to ask is, what's the maximum amount of civil penalty fines do we want to stop at? Before going into abatement?
Hmm.
Okay.
That, that, that is the question we're trying to ask. So, you know. Is it two thousand dollars? Is it, there's?
It says the cost of the abatement, does the property owner have to pay that?
Place does a lien against the property.
Yeah.
What about the accrual, the accrual of, of the, let's just pick Marion's number, five thousand dollar maximum? And you get to that point, nothing's happened. You get through, you start, you go through the court injunction process next. That five thousand dollars is not gonna go away. That's gonna, that's gonna manifest itself somehow as a lien. Um.
Do it in combo all.
Yeah, the town's gonna perfect that lane at some point in time and, and get that money back.
And we're required to recoup the cost.
Correct. So you've got, so I'm, I'm thinking. You know, once you, once you've got the five thousand dollars, you, you, there's a lot of, there's been a lot of days gone by. At fifty bucks a day.
Hmm.
Take it down to twenty five hundred, take it down twelve hundred, fifteen hundred.
All right.
You know, and.
What is Henderson County's or third none?
Fifty dollars.
No, 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 the maximum, sorry. There's no maximum, sir.
Having a maximum is, is an impetus to, to start the injunction process, to get things rolling.
Correct.
Once you get to that point, and it's also more fodder for the judge when you say, you know, we've issued, we, we. Courtesy notice, we've done three notices of violation, we assess civil penalties to our maximum accumulated value of twenty five hundred dollars. Your, your honor, to ask for them.
Compliance has not been met.
Yeah, compliance has not been met, no efforts been made, they're not communicating with us.
Those days don't even start to occur, the kind of a sixty day period.
Correct. So here, here's the thing, like at thirty one days for fifty dollars a day is fifteen hundred and fifty dollars. So that would be, you know, even when we were talking about the forty five, the fifteen and then the forty five. So we'd at least have to move it up to forty five times thirty one is, that's fourteen hundred dollars. Did I do that right? No.
No.
Times.
Forty five, forty five times fifty.
Forty five.
I'm saying these days, the fifty dollars a day doesn't start to go after our initial sixty day period.
Till the citation issue.
Then there's a forty five day, uh, correct, yes.
Yes, so at forty five days, that's already accrued, I mean, if we were going from time to time.
I'm saying.
So forty five days worth is twenty, uh, twenty two hundred dollars roughly. So that's forty five days out.
We have a. A courtesy notification and we put fifteen days on that, forty five days after that.
So that's two months.
So my point is, question is, I guess, what, no, but fifty dollars a day to start to build sixty per day.
Right.
Then, yeah, I mean, and then that's another, you know, the thirty days times fifty. You that, um, the number, I think, you know, um, then that's what I would do.
Just a procedural question because this is all completely foreign to me. O- once the town takes on the abatement process and it's abated, the, the fines. Do they legally have to stop at that point? I would assume.
I would think that I, I would have and you, they kind of lost the abatement through full action movie. That's that.
Yeah. So roughly, that took after the sixty days of no citation, the citation gets issued. I mean, does anyone have a guess here on where we'd get to abatement on, on the calendar, three months later?
Oh, I would, so would we do it on the day that we reached the max?
Matt, no, correct, yeah. Then, right, and so, so we can't go, we're gonna stop charging them at that point that we do the abatement, one way or another.
How long would it take you to get an abatement together from sixty one? Say you could get a court date at any time, but you need to get your stuff together, you know?
It would be sixty, but it would be.
You've never done it before.
Yeah.
Could you find that information out for us? That, how long then an abatement takes? And then we can do it fifty dollars a day and kind of get a ball game.
Abatement would be a, a hundred and twenty day. I mean, a hundred, my math, I can do that now, so.
Well, abatement, abatement could start at sixty one, correct?
Could, but we're fining them, so why wouldn't we find them, you know, to the maximum and they abatement to take place under that?
That's the reason why I'd like to know how long it takes for the town to get ready for an abatement. Because if at sixty one, they start their abatement and it takes thirty days. We could find them for thirty days, that would be our cap, then we go into abatement and they get it fixed. Does that sound logical?
That wants that fine to continue until the abatement day.
Yeah, yes, yes.
There's some good questions in there for your town attorney too, because they're gonna, she's gonna want to. Do a real comprehensive deep dive on the title, especially like if there's, um. Like in the case, this, this parcel you talked about, where there's somebody's deceased, there's, there's some next of kin somewhere that. Through the magic of probate, might be somebody that they need to get in touch with. That's the way the attorney's looking. Just get, ask her if she could give you a kind of a, a ballpark figure of what it would take from start to finish for her to. To file, file a motion with Superior Court and to get in, get the thing rolling. And that'd be a good number for us to have too, I think.
Hmm.
Ballpark, yeah, it's, there's four thousand variables there, but, yeah.
So just to get an understanding, staff will do a little research into the, the process timeline.
If you really wanna tie it to dates.
Yes.
Not today.
Tie it to a max.
Yeah, great, that's good.
All right, um.
Okay, sorry to add to that.
No, you're not.
This is why we're working on this. If it was our thirty days. Uh, no matter how long the abatement took after that, say that at the end of that maximum of fifteen hundred. Whatever number of days it took to complete the abatement, you would just add fifty dollars to that.
Let's get this information first and then, and then circle back.
Yeah.
See what our.
My, my last question for the night is gonna be around payment due dates, uh, for civil penalties. So let's say property owner gets in compliance but has some civil penalties, uh, fines that tag along. Um, should we have in our code a due date for when those, uh, fines need to be paid? Before a, a, a late penalty is assessed, a late, a penalty pays assessed.
We currently do not have one.
In our fee schedule, we have a five percent, uh.
But is there a date where that?
There is no date. That's the, that's the problem.
We usually tie it to thirty days, which is the standard compliance period we get. So basically, we would state, once your property's in compliance, you would have thirty days to get in full compliance by closing out the fines.
My brain defaulted to thirty days, but all these here are ten and fifteen, so that's why.
I like thirty.
I like thirty.
I agree.
I like thirty. And then lastly, I'll just mention to, for information is that all five payments collected go to our local schools system. So just wanna clarify that.
Do we get discretion on which school it goes to?
No. All right.
Uh, you don't, you don't wanna go on that.
No, you don't want me to get on that soapbox.
Okay, so I guess that concludes, uh, the discussion on the nuisance ordinance.
I envy you guys for having to do this. Thanks for all your hard work on this.
Now, I have, uh, on the new business, which it, to me is not new business, the U D O. And I have a suggestion. Since all of the board is part of the steering committee. And, uh, we have various discussions on U D O. Uh. And it's getting rather late. I would like to throw out, why don't we just table any further discussions on the U D O tonight? For another time, but we have the, a meeting coming up in a few days. That everybody, we hope will attend, and you can get all your questions answered. All we can do tonight is discuss. Which we've discussed and discussed before.
So I, I have some questions, Jim, if that's okay, on, on this.
Uh.
I have some questions on this, not, not discussion, just the next meeting.
Yeah.
You know, timeline, you know, uh. And I've had a lot of people ask me if the public's allowed to that, and I, I, my response naturally, why, I figure out everything, but. I, I need to, are they, is the public allowed to attend the U D O steering committee meetings? And I know a lot of them are gonna be Zoom calls and I plan on coming in here for Zoom calls. Is the public allowed to attend those? If you don't have an answer right now, that's, that's okay. I've been asked several times if they can, you know, attend and observe.
Yeah, I mean, because it's a, uh.
Steering committee.
A steering committee appointed by council just for this project. There is no agenda that, you know, has public input or public comment. And so, um, I'd have to look into that.
If you don't mind, I've just been.
The steering committee not making a final decision or.
No, the.
Or recognition.
No, it's digging into the, the complex material and basically having the back and forth discussion with the consultant.
And the upcoming meeting is, that's where we're looking for public input, right?
Yes, but we're looking for public input or on Wednesday, December tenth, sixteen to eight thirty, those are relevant.
That's, that's where I'm at on that, so.
Uh, and I'll just say, the only reason the U D O item is on the new business of the agenda is because the planning board asked it to be a recurring item. Just for discussion purposes.
Yes, right.
And you said that you would bring, uh, you would send out the dates and time.
Do that tomorrow morning.
Awesome.
Right, so.
With next week being a big week, I'm good with that for this week. I'd like to keep it there as a standing bullet point on our meetings.
Yeah, so do I have a motion to table it for tonight?
Well, we've moved.
That's it, so we've actually got.
We're good.
Mark it off the list.
Yeah, well, we talked about it, so we can move on to.
So, uh, are there any additional items? None?
Absolutely not.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Meeting is adjourned.